Settled here. Thanks for your patience. Good morning. My name is Rachel Chernus-Lynn, Councilor Rachel Chernus-Lynn, and I'm Chair of the City School Board's Advisory Committee. The Clerk has confirmed that we have quorum, so I'd like to call Meeting Four of the City School Board's Advisory Committee to order. Welcome, everyone. It's great to see some old friends, meet some new ones, and we are joined, some online, some in person. This meeting is being held with committee members and staff participating by both video conference and in person at City Hall. This meeting is being held with committee members and staff participating both by video conference and in person at City Hall in Committee Room Two. Members of the public may also attend in person or observe the meeting on YouTube. Because we are meeting in person and remotely, I ask for your patience with any delays and technical issues, and also given that it's the first meeting I've chaired at the city, a little bit of extra indulgence as I find my way through this. If you are registered to speak at today's meeting, and I don't believe we have anybody who is registered to speak, do we? Okay, so I can skip over that then. I request that staff and invited participants, as well as any observers joining remotely, to keep their video turned off unless they need to speak or answer questions. This will make it easier for me as chair to see the members as we debate and vote on agenda items. I would also ask that all members and staff keep their microphones muted unless you need to answer a question or speak. If members wish to speak on an item, please make sure your video is on if you're online, and raise your hand or unmute your microphone and indicate your intention to speak. This is important partially because I can't see, I have to turn around to see, so Nathan, if you, actually, no, I can see you in front of me. Sorry, I just realized there's another, there's screens everywhere. Ignore that. When voting on an item or a motion, right, ask members to, video on, raise your hand to indicate your vote. And I would also remind members that if you have any motions on any of the agenda items, you're required to submit them in writing, and they can be emailed to staff@sbac@toronto.ca. So I'd like to begin with a land acknowledgement. Although we may be meeting in different locations today, the Housing Rights Advisory Committee would like to acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nation, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. At this point, we need a motion to confirm the minutes from our last committee meeting on October 21st, 2024. Thank you, Trustee Rizzo would like to confirm the minutes. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, seeing none that has carried. At this time, we will be bringing in new business. Members, we have two new business items being brought forward by Trustee Rizzo. The first is backlog of city approvals for school board projects, and the second is related to student trustee voices. So we'll start with the first item. This is the backlog of city approvals for school board projects. I will ask the Clerk if they could please display the items so that members can review it before voting on whether to add it to the agenda. So you will now see this on the screen. Thank you for making that bigger for those of us with aging eyes. And so at this time, I would like to move a motion to add this item to the agenda as new business. Okay, are we able to put that back on the screen just for a moment for people to read it over?
Is it not sent?
I don't know. Was this circulated to membership?
No.
No, okay. So we didn't have confirmation. I guess there was some confusion on that. So we'll just, perhaps we can just, am I allowed to ask the mover to speak to it? Sure. Trustee Rizzo, please go ahead. You can speak to your new business just to explain what you're requesting. And really, if you want to just outline sort of what you're requesting as new business for us to look at, then we can get into it in further detail if it's approved.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm not going to belabor it. I thought that, can it be sent now, just out of curiosity, Madam Chair?
Are we able to circulate this to membership via email? Is that possible? Okay, if it's approved, it will also be added live on the agenda? So it will be easily viewable?
Okay, I just thought it would be easier for people to make the decision on it. This isn't for today's meeting. This is to give sort of a little bit of notice to staff and to the members of the committee if there are other issues at their own boards, and I'm assuming that there are, around outstanding city approvals. As the construction season comes into play, which starts pretty well in the summer, we try and do a lot of our construction projects, or do as much as we can during that time. So it's just in preparation so hopefully we can clear up some of the backlog so that we can get, all our school boards can get together, get ready for the summer season and get some permits out of the way and into the construction phase.
Okay, so, okay, so this is really just to add this to the next agenda?
Yes. It's not to have a discussion about it today. It's to, you know, the appropriateness of adding it to the agenda, and I just wanted to make sure that people were on board. I don't know. It might be that no one, you know, Toronto District doesn't have any. I can't believe that, but if there isn't, then there isn't. I don't know about the French boards, to be perfectly frank, but this is just on the city approval process and what we can do to help it move along.
Okay, so can I just have a question? I have a question of clarification to the Clerk's office. If this is just to add this to a future agenda, is this, is this new business or is this? So we'll discuss this at this meeting as to whether we will add it in future. That's really the, it's just really, am I understanding?
It's being added to today's meeting as new business to be discussed at today's meeting. So if it's something that wants to be talked about at a future meeting, you don't have to add it to today's agenda. We can just take it offline. And as part of the agenda-setting process, you could add it to the next agenda if you don't want to have the discussions today.
So, Trustee Rizzo?
So, Madam Chair, I did hear what was said. I was told, first of all, I was told that I had to submit a letter. It is my opinion that the members of the committee should determine whether or not they want to deal with it. If they don't have any issues, then they don't have any issues. Then I could take this offline and deal with the issues related to the school board that I represent, which is the Toronto Catholic District School Board. It's a really simple thing. Like, do we have an issue with the planning, city approval process? Yes or no? The Catholic School Board has one. It's an average of 33 months to get a site plan approved at the city of Toronto.
Okay, so I would suggest then that we add this to the agenda for today. There can be a discussion on it to some extent, and if we determine as a group that we want this to come back as a more fulsome agenda item at a future meeting, I can certainly do that, having heard feedback from you guys that we want to add that.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, so at this point, can I, am I voting on each of these independently, or are we doing this together as?
The committee needs to vote.
Right, but separately. Okay, so at this time, can I just ask the committee how you vote? Are you in favor of adding this as new business? All those in favor? Okay, that has carried, because I don't think there's any opposition. Okay, so next is student trustee voices. So we could just display this item on the screen so that members can review it as well. So, Trustee Rizzo, do you want to just speak to this briefly as to what this is, just so that people understand what you're requesting?
Yes, thank you very much. I just thought it would be a really important, it would be very nice, and very important, to ask our student trustees, all of our school boards have student trustees on their boards, and they are by far the most amazing and inspiring young people I have ever met in my life, more than my own colleagues, to be perfectly frank, but I love our student trustees a great deal. And I think that this is supposed to be about, you know, some of the things that we do, I mean, and school boards exist to make sure that our kids get the best education possible, and we're around this table. And it would be nice to hear their, the things that they think are important, and it's good for us to hear what other boards are doing as well. And I think it would be a really good opportunity. I suggest that we do it at the next meeting, and in discussion with the Chair, she suggested that they had exams at the next meeting, which would be in June, I believe it was June 18th. And I checked with one of my school trustees prior to getting here, and she said that exams actually start on the 20th. And I asked her if that would be an issue, and she said no. But I don't know what the schedule is for Toronto District or the French boards. But if that's not okay, then perhaps at a meeting, not in September, but the one after that, because they would be pretty new in their roles, because they are sworn in usually in September for their new terms.
Okay, so...
And again, it's not to discuss today. It's like, if you want to do it, we do it. If we don't want to do it, then, you know, then whoop this down.
So my suggestion would be that we could probably take this offline, and I'd be happy to, if the Clerk is okay with this. I don't know that we need a motion if we're going to add this to a future agenda, because I could be able to just work with my colleagues on this committee to establish when the right time for that would be. Does that make sense? Genevieve? Or, Trustee Roger?
If I can bring a comment. The point of this committee is to specifically talk about issues that relate to our boards in the city of Toronto. The student trustees participate in each of our boards, and they make their perspective known, like, at those tables. I'm trying to better understand what the objective is if we're trying to kind of reproduce what's happening in our tables here. Also, the meeting takes place during school hours. It's half a day, whether it's exam period or not, especially a lot of these students, they're in grade 11 or 12. And in many cases, we've had about four meetings of this committee, and several times, some agenda items have been pushed forward to a later date because we haven't been able to go through the agenda. So I would encourage us to think a little bit more about what the purpose of that would be.
Okay, so then I think what we should do, just given the commentary, is let's vote on whether we add this to the agenda or not, and then we can have, if it's added to the agenda, there can be a discussion about whether we want this as a future topic, because there seems to be potentially some disagreement among committee members. Does that seem like everybody's okay with that? Okay, so I'm just going to ask the committee to determine whether we want to add this as new business today, what's before us. So all those in favor? Okay, and any opposed? Okay, and that has carried. So we'll just add that to the agenda for today, to determine if that's to be a topic down the road. Okay, so can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Okay, thank you. And all those in favor? I think I saw hands go up. And that has carried. So moving on to the next item, we have TS 4.2. This is the Cricket Facilities Working Group.
Nutrition.
Oh, my goodness, okay. My apologies, I skipped a page. TS 4.1, Building a Universal Student Food Nutrition Program in Toronto. So this item was deferred from the October 21st, 2024 meeting. Today, we have Dr. Nakoshi Lamptey, Acting Medical Officer of Health from Toronto Public Health, and Myron Palisandurin, Director of Operations and Business Services from Toronto Public Health, to provide a presentation on building a universal student food nutrition program in Toronto. Welcome, and thank you so much for joining us, Dr. Lamptey and Myron. I hope I have pronounced your names accordingly, and if I have not, please correct them for me. And with that, I will turn it over to you, but please do direct me if I've made an error. Okay, REIT so like pizza. Okay, I've had one, and anyone else, please, I apologize, and please go ahead and feel free to correct me.
Good morning. Thank you. I am Dr. Nakoshi Lamptey. I am the Acting Medical Officer of Health, and I'm very delighted to be here in conjunction with my colleague Myron Palisandurin, Director of Operations and Business Services, Toronto Public Health. So we're very pleased to be here at this committee this morning to provide a brief overview of the student nutrition program. If we can put up the first slide, please, to also provide an update of the city of Toronto expansion of the student nutrition program, and inform the committee of next steps for potential municipal expansion. Okay, thank you. So we can move on to the next slide, please. So student nutrition programs, as you can see here on the slide, come together as a result of the financial and non-monetary contributions of many partners. All three levels of government, including the city of Toronto, provide critical funding supports. And the levels of government funding do vary or can vary each year. In 2024, the federal government committed new investments to Ontario student nutrition programs as part of the new national school food program. Base funding from the provincial government has generally remained the same since 2015, except for some one-time funding during the pandemic. Student nutrition programs also receive funding from non-government sources, such as parent fundraising efforts, corporate donations, and other grants. And this funding can vary from school community to school community. An important factor of what makes student nutrition programs successful is the contribution of non-monetary supports, including the provision of food and equipment, the time and efforts of volunteers who deliver the program, in-kind use of space, equipment maintenance, and other supports. While each funding source provides necessary contributions, it's important to note that in our city, currently existing sources of funding and supports do not cover all program costs. Next slide, please. So what are student nutrition programs? They are programs that provide healthy breakfast, morning meal, lunch, and snack options to over 243,000 students. to over 243,000 students each school day. And I'm just going to repeat that, 243,000 school students. The reason I'm emphasizing that is a population, public health position, I think at the population level. And just that number is equivalent to the population sizes of many other municipalities in our province. As I said earlier, programs are run locally by parents, volunteers, and students in collaboration with public schools. While most programs are located in public schools, some are also offered by independent schools and in community agencies. They give students access to nutritious and safe food in a non-stigmatizing manner, which is especially important for those at risk for poor nutritional intake. And where possible, programs try and encourage and give access to culturally appropriate food. Next slide, please. Research has shown that healthy school meals, particularly morning meals, support student mental health and physical health, and positively impact food choices. Student nutrition programs contribute to better success in the classroom, such as increased attendance and focus, improved test scores in math, science, and reading. Students become more likely to graduate from high school. And programs also contribute to healthy, longer-term behaviors and health benefits, such as greater nutrition knowledge, healthier eating habits, reduced risk of chronic diseases, and improved mental health. I will now hand it over to Myron, who'll speak about our program partners and provide an update on the program.
Thank you very much. As Dr. Lamptey mentioned earlier, there are many different partners who help make, and work together to help make student nutrition programs possible. The provincial government, as you noticed here, under the Ministry of Children, Community, and Social Services, plays a role by setting nutrition guidelines as well as providing some funding. The Toronto Foundation for Student Success, or TFSS, is a lead agency that administers the funding in Toronto. Student Nutrition Ontario Toronto is a community partnership that allocates municipal and provincial funding, and has program oversight, and provides training and expertise, and monitors program quality and accountabilities. We have a group of four partners there, one being Toronto Public Health. We also have the Toronto District School Board and the Toronto Catholic District School Boards, the Toronto Foundation for Student Success, and the Angel Foundation for Learning. Please note that the Toronto Foundation for Student Success administers the municipal granting to programs affiliated with TDSB, CSV, CSCMA, independent schools, and community locations. Whereas the Angel Foundation for Learning administers the municipal grant to programs affiliated with TCDSB. At Toronto Public Health, we play a couple roles. One is we do chair the SNO Toronto Committee. We coordinate the annual government grant application process for Toronto, and we play a lead role in providing nutrition and food safety expertise, as well as inspecting programs for food safety. The school boards also play a very important role. They operationalize the program in collaborations with schools, and parent community, and mobilize volunteers. Next slide, please. As noted earlier, the city of Toronto is a leader in advocating for investing in student nutrition. Student nutrition programs have existed in Toronto since the early 90s. In 2012, City Council endorsed a vision for a universal student nutrition program, which led to a significant program expansion to hundreds of school communities over many years. Most recently, in October 2024, City Council committed to realizing a universal morning meal for every student in Toronto by September 2026, and a universal lunch by 2030. In the December budget, City Council approved an expansion of the SMP program to additional school communities, starting in January. And also in December, City Council declared a food insecurity emergency, food security emergency in the city of Toronto. City Council also requested the government material increase its financial commitment towards school food programs. Next slide, please. Again, in December, City Council increased the public health budget by 2.6 million to support the expansion of student nutrition programs in the 24-25 school year. This was the first program expansion amongst public schools 2018, reaching many new school communities and 8,000 additional students in Toronto. I'm happy to share that student nutrition programs in all these schools are fully operational. Including the new programs, student nutrition programs now operate in around 75% of our school communities. Next slide, please. Now, Toronto Public Health is very excited to share that as part of the budget of 2025, Toronto Public Health's operating budget for student nutrition programs increased by 6.8 million. This will enable the expansion of the program to further 25 school communities for the 25-26 school year, as well as growing existing programs, reaching 13,500 new students in Toronto. This investment will also provide continued funding towards the purchase of nutritious food for the programs launched in January 2025, which was reaching 8,000 students. Student Nutrition Ontario Toronto is reaching out to school communities in the greatest needs, which do not have a student nutrition program, to promote this funding opportunity and assist in readiness assessments and funding applications. Next slide, please. Again, in October 2024, City Council committed to realizing a universal morning meal by September 2026, and a universal lunch program by September 2030. The city manager's office is in collaboration with TPH, and will report back to executive, sorry, in second quarter 2025, with an update on advancing this vision and strategy. The report will include stakeholder engagement plans, including consultations with school boards and other stakeholders. Last slide, please. Again, sincere thanks to having us attend this committee today for your time and for allowing us to present this update.
Thank you very much for that presentation. At this time, I would ask my colleagues around the table and online if there are any questions for staff. So we have a speaker's list starting. I have, and I will just let you know that I do have. So far, Nathan's hand hasn't gone up. Vice Chair Shen, would you like to be added to the speaker's list too? Okay, so I will just let you know that we do have, I have two motions, or some recommendations that we'll put on the screen a little bit later around this, but.
I have to ask, I'm really sorry, I do really need to be accommodated. If you don't mind, I cannot see the screen, it's too small for me. Could you please send it to me?
Sure, I'll pass you this copy, and we'll get another.
It doesn't matter, I can't read a hard copy. I have to read it on the.
Okay, so we're going to ask.
I have a visibility issue, as well as a hearing issue, as well as a walking issue. But my brain still works.
Okay, well, thank goodness. So we will send that around to all members of the committee.
That'd be great, thank you.
And so you can check your inboxes in a moment. But in the meantime, we'll start the speaker's list, because I'm sure there may be questions for staff on this excellent presentation and this really good news story. So trustee Rizzo, you're first on the list.
Great, thank you. I don't think I expected so much good news, to be perfectly frank. And thank you for all your work to make this happen in the city of Toronto. I do have a couple of questions. In terms of the approval process, is there a specific criteria that you use to determine what schools will get the nutrition program? I mean, the ones that haven't had it yet.
Through you, Chair. There are two different processes. If I speak about the most recent expansion in January, what we did was Toronto Public Health went to the past few years of applications that were rejected purely from a funding point of view, meaning they applied, they met the criteria, but because of lack of funding, we couldn't get to those schools. We went back to those schools first to assess the readiness, and those that were ready from a point of view of a startup in January, those were the schools that were selected from that point of view. Going forward, the next expansion for the September school year, we're going to be back to our regular application process, where we have criterias based on academic, as well as social-economic factors that we consider when determining which schools will be selected.
Okay, that's perfect. Could you tell me what the application process is for a school community to apply for a program?
We have an online link, but before the online link, we do work with our partners, both TFSS and the Angel Foundation, to kind of work with school communities directly and help them through that application process.
And do you have a list, when's the application due?
In fact, the applications were initially already due, I believe, last week, but we had extended it based on the new budget that added additional funding. So I believe it's the end of this month. Again, if partners need assistance with that, we're happy to help, whether through us directly or with the foundations directly.
That's fantastic. Okay, so I just need to understand, because I know that, you know, schools are sometimes overwhelmed and need a little bit of help. So you're saying that both the Toronto District and Toronto Catholic use, in the case of Toronto Catholic, the Angel Foundation to assist them with the application process?
Yes, they're a point of assistance as well, and we at Toronto Public Health are also a point of assistance. So if a particular school community does need the assistance, please do reach out, or have them reach out.
I just want to say thank you very much for all your work in making this happen. I didn't think that it was going to happen in my lifetime, to be perfectly honest, with the moratorium, I call it a moratorium, not having any funding for many, many years. So this is great, and we all know that if kids don't eat, they don't learn. Thank you. I'll move your seat at any point you want me to.
We're going to continue on the speaker's list first. So trustee Shen, please go ahead, you're next.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the amazing report and the good news. And we've had the mayor at three of our schools in the last few months also discussing this. I just wanted to ask specifically around readiness. And so as readiness is one of the factors that is considered, and if the need, so in terms of selection of the school, if the need exists, but the readiness is not there, can we find a way in which we can actually, through trustees, help with that readiness? Because I wouldn't want to see a school that has the need not be supported before another school if that readiness of either facilities or, you know, staff support, or whatever may be the case. So just want to make sure that that criteria doesn't become a barrier. So just want to clarify how that could be supported by us.
Again, thank you for the question, through you, the Chair. You know, one role is that, the role that TPH plays is more on the granting side, the nutrition side, and the food safety. But we do work with our partners, in your case, TFSS, to help assess the readiness and also help a school community to get ready. There are programs that may not have made, for example, the last expansion in December, but who have expressed interest, and our partners are helping them to get ready. There are some limitations at times with, let's say, infrastructure, lack of a sink, for example. There are other means to provide a fully nutritious snack program. It may be today that you're receiving a box snack, but in six months from now, or a year from now, you've gone to more things that can be washed and cut, like a vegetable or fruit. So there are a process, and we're happy to even help those school communities that are on the cusp to kind of get through that. But again, that will be worked through the foundations, but if there's any issues, I'm happy to assist as well on a particular situation.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up to this, I know this might be a question more to the leadership at city, but does SN, or the Student Nutrition Ontario, also do advocacy-related work around? I see the vision of, you know, getting to an afternoon meal as well by 2030 that will require quite a significant amount of additional investment, and the city already puts in more than a fair share to begin this process. So I just wanted to know if there is work that gets done through SNO, or if that's something that could have some direction for us to do through this committee and as well as our respective boards and the city council.
So Vice Chair Shen, you're preempting the motion slightly. We do have a motion a little bit around that, to some extent, in terms of, because the city is bearing quite a bit of this responsibility, and we do need partners at other levels of government. So you will see that in the motion reflected. But as for the question about how we work with Ontario on this, Myron, do you have any comments to add on that? Or is there anyone who can comment on that from staff?
Through you, Chair. From a general standpoint, the committee does try to reach out to our partners, whether in federal government or provincial government. There are various organizations that are set up to have that direct communication. So it's more of a softer advocacy, and I think I'll leave it at that, it's more of a softer advocacy versus direct.
Thank you very much, that's the end of all my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next up, we have trustee Ogier, please go ahead.
Thanks very much. Thank you for the presentation, through you, Chair. Our administration tells me that the, our school board administration works very well with the professionals that work at the city of Toronto. They're very helpful, some of them even speak French on this. So thank you for their professionalism. Based on the presentation, the focus is on breakfast and lunch. And I was just, I would encourage the city of Toronto to leave a little bit of flexibility to the school boards, to see what works best. We have homework help in some of our schools after school, and the homework help also features snacks. And so just, I would encourage you to leave a bit of flexibility to the boards to see what works best, as many of the kids who go to the after-school help are perhaps not going to after-school programs or activities, piano, et cetera. So just something to consider.
Thank you, that's a great comment. Trustee Rizzo, do you have further comment? Sure, please go ahead.
So I'm just wondering, do we have metrics on how it's going to be basically evaluated? You know, that the money is being spent on food versus administration, that kind of stuff. I'm just wondering what you're using as your, I don't know, how are you going to figure out this is all good? Like, I know it's all good already, but like, even better?
Through the Chair, thank you for the question. One of the metrics we do use is an obvious one, is to how many students were participating in the program, or how many meals were provided to kind of show the level of support we are giving to schools. When you talk about metrics related to, are you thinking about like food purchases? Or?
Well, no, I'm talking about, you know, so we're giving the Angel Foundation money. How do we know that money is going directly to the food program and not hiring staff, for example?
Thank you for the question. They do report back on their spending, and they are aware that when we do give funds out, there are criterias attached to it. For example, in the most recent expansion, funds were given for the food program, as well as some one-time money for startup costs, such as fridges, sinks, and small construction projects.
Okay, and are we not, is the city not supposed to get money from the federal government? I thought that that was part of all of this food nutrition stuff, and I'm not sure that it ever got funneled down. And I think that, I haven't read the entire motion, but I think you, I think there's some parts of it that deal with the federal. I was just wondering if you know of any monies that are coming from the federal government? I assume they go to the provincial government and then to us, to the city.
So to the Chair, you're right, there was the announcement of a federal funding program. So that money went, did not come to the city, but in terms of the city as a municipality, it went straight to the.
Student Nutrition Ontario.
To Student Nutrition Ontario. And that money was only allowed to be used for existing programs, and for equipment and logistics, not for food. So that money did arrive.
Do we know how much?
The Chair.
So I threw you, Madam Chair.
It was 4.78 million.
And it is being spent by whom?
Through the foundations as well.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Sorry, I just. Sorry, I just needed some clarification questions before we deal with your motion.
No problem. So at this time, seeing no further questions from the floor, I would ask that the clerk display the motions, the recommendations on the screen for everyone. And they have been sent to members who are in the meeting today. Okay, so they're now up. And this motion is that the City School Boards Advisory Committee recommend that city council request the federal government reallocate unspent funding for the 2025 budget year through the National Student Food Program from jurisdictions where funding agreements have not been secured directly to jurisdictions with agreements in place, including Ontario for Toronto's school food programs. And that city council request the newly-elected government of Ontario to increase its per-student financial contribution levels for student nutrition programs in Toronto, such that the province matches or exceeds the city's contributions. Are there any, so just one moment, I'm just going to pause for one moment. Are there any questions on this motion? I'm happy to take any questions. Trustee Rizzo.
I don't understand the first one.
So it is our understanding that there may be additional funding that wasn't spent through the National School Food Program from jurisdictions where funding agreements have not yet been secured directly with agreements in place. So we have that in the City of Toronto, but perhaps not everywhere. So if there are any funds that haven't been spent, we want to make sure that those are dispersed and that the money that was intended for students actually gets to students. So that's really what this speaks to.
Okay, thank you. It was just very complicated. I wasn't sure what all of them meant. But thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely. So seeing no further questions, I would just ask that we open the vote on this with a show of hands. All those in favor? Okay, and any opposed? No, and that has carried unanimously. Okay, so I would just ask, thank you for that. I'm still getting used to the city's processes here. Can I ask for a motion to amend the item, to adopt the item as amended? Thank you.
Sorry, I, the item as amended, there wasn't a motion.
Well, we just did essentially an amendment, because originally it was to receive the...
But no one moved it. I said I would, but, so did that count?
We'll record it as such.
Okay, thank you. I do want to speak, I think I have a... You know what? I'm going to leave it. I think that this is good enough for now. I'm so excited about where this is going that people around this table and people around, most of the school boards have been working on this for a long time, including Mayor Chow, who started this many, many years ago. So I am above ecstatic. So thank you to everyone who had a hand at bringing us this far.
Okay, thank you. So just on the motion, we're just going to... Okay, so we're just going to make sure we have a clear vote on this. Can I have a motion to adopt the item as amended? All those in favor? Any opposed? I think that's everybody anyways, so we're good. Okay, that has carried unanimously. The next item is item TS 4.2 Cricket Facilities Working Group and Recreation Facilities Master Plan Update. So this has been a big topic of this committee over the past year, and we have the following staff joining us from Parks and Recreation. We have Matt Bentley, Senior Project Manager, Strategic Projects Implementation and Community Engagement; Alex Lavisitis, Project Officer, Strategic Projects Implementation and Community Engagement; and Kelly Murphy, Manager of Policy Development and Policy and Strategic Planning. Welcome. And if I have mispronounced any names, please feel free to correct me. And at this point, you can proceed with your presentation. We'll get that up on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name's Matt Bentley, and we're very excited today to provide an update on a couple of items that have come from this committee. Sorry, I jumped ahead. Apologize. So the two items that we'll be presenting on, it'll be a joint presentation between the three of us. One is the requested update around the cricket working group between the school boards and the City of Toronto, and an update on the Parks and Recreation Facilities Plan and focus on gender equity related to sport field use going forward. So starting with the City School Boards Cricket Facilities Working Group. In July of 2024, we came and presented to this group on the City of Toronto's cricket strategy. And from that, we were requested to come back to this committee with a work plan to essentially work with the school boards and the city in partnership in order to sort of collaborate, to identify opportunities to increase access to facilities, programs, and equipment in related to cricket. And that's what brings us here today. Since that, the request was made, we have established the City of Toronto being the lead with our partners at the school boards, including the Toronto Lands Corporation. We've established a working group. We've met twice already. We started in December of 2024. And you can see that all school boards and TLC are engaged in that working group moving forward. So the working group met together to basically establish a terms of reference and a work plan. And over the seven meetings that we've proposed for this year, we will be advancing that work plan. But in summary, there are some significant goals and outcomes that this working group has been established to achieve. So first and foremost, it really is recognizing the need for greater collaboration and a more coordinated collaboration between the school boards related to these facilities. And then specifically, the interest really is in the facilities themselves, programming related to those facilities. And we did even also hear about the need for access to equipment to play the sport. So what we expect to achieve through this group is we intend in collaboration to identify opportunities for new facilities that can be constructed in cooperation between the City of Toronto and Engaging School Lands, which we, I think, all agree is a great sort of untapped opportunity. We're also looking to align our programming with the school boards, which already do a fair amount of cricket programming, as we do in the City of Toronto, to identify opportunities. And then also around the equipment and supplies, which is something that we look forward to achieving. I'm now going to hand it over to my colleague Alex Lavisitis, who is going to take us through the update of the Recreation Facilities Plan, and then we'll get into gender equity with Kelly after that. Thanks, Alex.
Thanks, ma'am. Thanks, everyone. All right, so also at the July 24 meeting, city council did request that Parks and Recreation provide an update to the City School Boards Advisory Committee on the status of the Facilities Master Plan with a focus on what's being undertaken for gender equity and sports field use. And so that's what we'll be presenting today. Just a little level setting. The Parks and Recreation Facilities Plan and the Implementation Strategy are both council-approved 20-year plans that help us build and renew recreation facilities to meet changing and growing needs across the city. And on the screen, it shows what's in scope with this plan. So we have community recreation centers, ice facilities, outdoor aquatic spaces, sports fields, as well as sports courts and zones. The Facilities Plan guides investment decisions, and it identifies our priorities for city recreation facilities up to 2038. So these recommendations direct things like reinvestment, that's in existing facilities, replacement, repurposing, and renewal. Helps us address facility gaps that may be caused by either geographic distribution or large wait lists in certain areas. And it helps us respond to future facility needs that would arise due to population growth. So we look ahead and we see what we need, and we try to meet those needs. Now in 2025, we are reviewing the Existing Facilities Plan. And the reason that we do this review about every five years is to reflect changing resident needs and priorities, a growing population, provincial legislation changes, new citywide policy directions, new facility strategies, for example, around ice, cricket, and more, changes to available funding, and updated accessibility and environmental standards. So our new Parks and Recreation Facilities Plan will be presented to city council in late 2025, and the implementation plan will be presented in Q2 of 2026. So here's an overall status update and our timeline. Right now, we're at the end of our Phase 1 of community engagements, which took place between fall of 2024 and this winter, where we were asking folks about challenges, opportunities, and their vision moving forward for our recreation spaces. And we are in the analysis portion. In spring of this year, we'll be moving into Phase 2 of our community engagement, where we explore directions and partnerships based on what we heard in Phase 1. That will be the end of our community engagement process. Again, in late 2025, we'll present the Facilities Plan to city council for approval. And then in Q2 of 2026 is when we'll present the Implementation Strategy to city council for approval. An update on the status of our community engagement, which again took place between this past fall and winter. We had four online public meetings, in-person pop-ups in every wards, that's 25 wards, over 3,000 interactions happened between staff and members of the public. Our online survey took in about 8,800 responses. We have an equity-deserving advisory group that we established and had our first meeting with. Classroom workshop kits were distributed in both English and in French, and we had about 200 student participants through that process. There was community-led do-it-yourself engagement kits, where over 12 events took place across the city. We've been visiting existing city advisory bodies, such as the Seniors Forum, lived experience advisory groups, and our Disability Steering Committee. And at the same time, we have a process going on for Indigenous community engagement, as well as First Nations engagement. So as I mentioned earlier, we are in the analysis stage. We're looking at all of the feedback we received. And one important point I want to bring up is we will be doing subgroup analysis with the feedback, specifically around feedback received from women, girls, and gender-diverse people. And we had over 63% of survey respondents, which is over 4,000 respondents, who identify as women, girls, or gender diverse. And also, as part of our equity-deserving advisory group, we made sure to include organizations that do focus their programming on women, girls, and gender diverse folks. And part of the outputs of the subgroup analysis will allow us to update the Facilities Plan to respond to the needs of underrepresented groups, including girls and women. And in terms of the outcome, so once this process is complete, the new Parks and Recreation Facilities Plan will include a response to our equity-centered analysis. So for example, our facility designs, facility provision, partnerships, and programming recommendations will consider and respond to the needs of underrepresented groups, and that includes girls and women and gender diverse people. There will be an updated list of facility requirements, provision levels, and strategies. This will include emerging areas, such as ice facilities, cricket, sports fields, and more. There will be new approaches to partnerships and the idea around co-location and community hubs. And this will include school board partnerships. There will be policy and financial contexts that are updated and that will then inform budgets, capital plans, and our related strategies. And finally, there will be recommendations for responding to new directions, trends, that emerge as we move forward. And I'll pass things on to Kelly to speak to gender equity and sports field use.
Thank you, Alex. Can you hear me? Yeah? So I am here pulling up the end to talk to...
We're just going to check your microphone. Is it on?
Can you hear me now? Okay, we can switch.
I think we hear your wonderful voice projecting, but not from the microphone.
There we go. How's that?
That's much better. Thank you so much.
So Alex has been talking about the work to plan sports and recreation facilities in Toronto over the next 20 years. And I'm here to talk briefly about the work that's underway to look at who is using those facilities. This project is one that we're undertaking in response to a council motion to conduct an internal review of Toronto's booking policies and procedures for ice time, cricket fields, and other sports fields to determine whether or not female groups and other startup groups, equity-deserving groups are receiving equitable access to the spaces. So quickly, the work that we've conducted last year, and much of it is ongoing, is to do a roster analysis to better understand who's played on our sports fields and in our rinks, outdoor and indoor, when and where. We've conducted focus groups with local sports leagues for girls, women, and gender diverse folks and newcomers. We conducted a jurisdictional scan of what other cities in Canada and in the United States are doing in relation to gender equity in access to sports facilities. And then we took a look at our policy and procedures using an equity lens to see what options we could pursue to move forward. So just quickly, what we learned is that the City of Toronto's practice of providing first right of refusal to locations and prime-time booking spaces at our arenas, rinks, and sports fields is the same kind of practice that's used across the country and in other places. You may have heard there's been some recent documentaries done on girls' access to sports, and it's well-recognized that this is a practice that is supportive of ongoing community traditions and relations amongst teams that have been using the facilities for years. But it does limit opportunities for new startup groups to get access to the best locations and best times to play. We also learned that we don't have enough data when it comes to gender to know who wants to play and who gets to play in our spaces. Until recently, we haven't required that groups provide very much demographic information in order to be able to book a sports field. So that's one of the changes that we've implemented this year that I'll speak about in a moment. So it's very difficult for us to do the assessment of gender equity because we haven't been asking people to give us that kind of information in order to get a permit. We also learned that female-led leagues and sporting groups are really eager to work with us and to work with one another to sort out these issues, and that they recognize the value of the first right of refusal approach that has built up really strong hockey traditions and sports group traditions over the years. But they're interested in knowing how we can make more room for more people to play. So what we're doing now is collecting more gender equity data so that we will be able to report on who gets to use the facilities and who requests to use them. In alignment with the city's data for equity strategy, we rewrote all of our rosters and permit application forms last year and put them into use for the coming scheduling period so that we can collect more data on who the permit holders are serving. Because the focus groups let us know that even when they get into a sports facility, they may not always feel as welcome as they would like to be. We've reinforced the city's human rights and anti-harassment policy in all of our booking documents and permit agreements, and have improved our communication around those policies to all permit holders. We're continuing through community recreation to deliver sports development opportunities for female and gender diverse participants, particularly when it comes to women and girls' hockey and female cricket opportunities. And we will be working really closely with Alex and the Facilities Master Plan team in order to ensure that the... closely with Alex and the Facilities Master Plan team in order to ensure that the learnings from gender diverse groups who've contributed to the Facilities Master Plan work inform further work to revise our permitting processes so that everyone who wants to play has an opportunity to do so. And I think that's-
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. At this time, I'll ask the members of the committee if there are any questions of staff on this item. So Vice Chair Shan, I see, or Chair Shan, my apologies, see your hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you to you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much to staff for the update. And a few questions. One is related to some information, if it is actually available publicly. I would love to see a few things. One, the makeup of the work, working group, the city's school board working group. I just want to see who the members are, if that's possible to see. And also, the Equity Deserving Advisory Committee as well. For the two groups, it will be if it's possible to see what the makeup is, if it's shareable publicly or to us. The other question I had is around the facilities related to cricket, and this is what drove this initial motion. A few years back, there was a commitment to a certain number of cricket fields across the city. I think it was the master plan that probably was there 10 years ago. So I'm just asking, even though we are updating the master plan, I want to know what has come through from that initial plan where I think there was a commitment of 10 or so, either new or updated facilities and so on. So I'll start with that first, and then I might have a follow-up question.
Through the Chair, I think I can answer all of them. Absolutely, we can share the membership of our group, so no problem with that. The Equity Deserving Advisory Group as well, all of our consultation work that we are doing through the Facilities Plan is being publicly shared online, so the membership of that group will be shared as well. So we can share that with this committee as well. And then specific to the cricket related to the Facilities Plan, Trustee Shan, you're correct that there were five full-size recommended fields through that plan, and then there were a number of upgrades that were identified as well. So we are actually in the process of advancing those through the capital budget, so we are on track to deliver what's there. But many will recall, we were here at this committee the last time to talk about our cricket strategy, and on day one with our cricket strategy, we heard that five wasn't enough. So the Parks and Recreation Facilities Plan, it is expected that we will be revisiting the recommendations related to cricket to ensure that we're basically catching up to the demand and then meeting future demand moving forward.
Thank you very much. During the time I was on council, there's the new community centre in Morningside and Shepherd. We pushed for like an indoor space to be kind of available for indoor cricket, because as you know, more than half the year, we won't be able to play cricket outside. So has there been like a separate strategy that's being developed on indoor options as well as the practice net or the batting cages type options as well as a kind of a complimentary thing, because they might be slightly easier to advance?
Yep. Through the Chair, Trustee Shan, so through the cricket strategy work that we're doing that will be embedded within our Facilities Plan, it's covering both the programming, which I think leans more towards the indoor spaces as well, and also typology for the outdoor facilities, which would include the sort of, you know, the practice net as well as what we're finding is a newer trend, which is some baseball diamond conversions to play and one directional play as well. So that will all come through the cricket strategy embedded within the Facilities Plan. And rightfully, so the Northeast, the community centre that will be coming into Northeast Scarborough was designed specifically for cricket, which will enable a significant amount of programming within that centre.
Thank you. To you, Madam Chair. I don't know if we go with time limit or one supplementary question, but I have one more question, if that's okay with you two.
Please go ahead.
The roster analysis, you know, that is also something that will be very interesting for us to look at as well. I've been asking the school board to do similar thing as well to see, you know, the impact of the first right of refusal and the kind of, you know, continuation of permits and so on. As some of these sports, most of these sports, A, have a lot of barriers from a gender equity perspective, but also socioeconomics and neighborhoods and age. You know, sometimes we go to these fields, the young kids are being chased out by the older ones because they pretend to have a permit which they may not have. So I want to know if there's a possibility to also, if that's being shared or if that's something would be shared later on, or is it an internal document?
Thanks for the question. Currently, it's an internal document, but moreover, as I mentioned, we found that the rosters were incompletely submitted, or we hadn't asked crucial questions to better understand equity of access. So we will be doing another roster analysis after two years in order to have sufficient data to better understand who is requesting to play. I anticipate that the summary report there will go to council, and then we'll be able to provide that data to you.
Thank you very much. That's it for me. Thanks to staff and thanks, Madam Chair.
Okay. Next up, we have Trustee Ogier.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you for this update. Now, I'm gonna bounce off something that Trustee Shan alluded to. Your gender equity strategy involves collecting a lot of data about who reserves sites, et cetera. And I was just going to suggest that you also think about the practical aspects that happen after sites have been reserved. For example, there is women's shinny that takes place in many ice rinks in the city of Toronto, and the schedule is clear. But if, for example, if there isn't a critical number of female shinny players, sometimes some male aggressive players will stay on the ice, and it will create tensions. And the people who work at these facilities, I mean, sometimes they're 18 or 19 years old, they don't know how to deal with that. So some of the equity strategy should also consider the practical aspects, possibly, you know, give the staff some tips about how to deal with some of these situations that happen after the schedule has been put off and the time has been reserved. So just a thought, but thank you very much for the very fulsome update.
Okay. Thank you for that. At this time, seeing no further questions for, do you have a question for staff?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead, Trustee Rizzo.
Thank you so much for your quick work and meeting with the four school boards. I think that that's a really good thing and a really good start. I am, once upon a time, actually, it was a Toronto District School Board Superintendent who taught me the process is more important than the end result, but I sort of just like want to leap over to the end result most of the time. So I'm wondering about the lack of data and how you're going to determine that in the future. Could I get some clarification on that? Because I, I'll give you an example. I'm not a big, like, you know, like, I'll watch the Super Bowl because of halftime. Like, I'm not, you know, like, a very active person, mostly because I'm in a wheelchair. But even as a participant observer, I tend not to, you know, do that kind of stuff. But I've learned, I've learned on the school board and through life, especially the school board, that if we're, for example, building a new school or a new field in a school, and it happens to be a single gender school for boys, we will make sure that there are people there that the design of that field is going to be regulation. But we just built a brand-new, single-gender girls' school, and their field isn't even close to being regulation. And I think that if it had been different, it would not have been overlooked. And it's, you know, I mean, it's systemic, and I know that. And that's why I'm, you know, like, on this course of making sure that we make it accessible to women, girl, and diverse groups, in my opinion. But I'm just wondering if you could tell me how we can, how you are planning to get that information so that things like, you know, so that women get equity in all of what we do in sports?
Thanks for the question. It's a big question. I think that-
Sorry, yeah.
No, no. I think the comment that I'll make is that the engagement that Alex was describing to you about consulting with equity-deserving communities about what they look for in recreation facilities will be essential for, like, planning our spaces to be responsive to the needs of gender equity in the future. In terms of the data that we're looking at, we hadn't ever asked, in order to book an arena, we hadn't really asked, who plays on your teams? So we would not be able to really know what the needs are. So we're starting to do that now. And we're also working with our focus group that represents women's shinny and queer and girls' hockey and cricket to better understand what barriers they face in accessing the space, and then what kind of barriers they face once they're there, so that we can work together to build new places that are accessible and to change our policies so that people feel safe in the sports fields.
Through you, Madam Chair, could I also ask how, what criteria you'll be using in determining future cricket fields? Is that what they're called?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So just to, through the Chair, a point of clarification, like, your design and sizes? Trustee Rizzo, is that what you're trying to determine?
Sorry?
Sorry, are you speaking more to the design and sizes, et cetera, of those fields?
No, I want to know, are you putting them in needy communities? Are you putting them in, like, you know, like, there's three over here, so we're putting it in Scarborough? Or there's three in Scarborough, so we're putting it in? I don't know. I don't know what criteria. It's not sort of evident to me how you're going to determine that.
Through the Chair, we will, that will be very, very clear. Currently, we have provision standards that are established within our current Facilities Plan, which we're reviewing, which we think may change, as I mentioned earlier, because of, we've certainly heard a lot of unmet demand related to cricket. What is worth noting as well is we are, as part of this work, we are doing a detailed work around typology of cricket facilities as well, recognizing that different types of fields can respond to different needs of play and by different players. When we are looking to locate facilities, full-size cricket pitches are extremely large. So obviously, we have some guidelines related to sizes of parks, and I think that's why especially this working group with the school boards is such a great opportunity for us to look at opportunities between us where we can accommodate some of those larger sizes moving forward. When we get to the actual locations of those, we absolutely do look at geographic equity across the city, but we also do look at prioritizing equity investment to make sure that the areas that need it the most are receiving those investments. And then lastly, we do hear directly, and that's why we do so much engagement with these plans, from people who are wanting to play the sport as well. And it's through that we can also identify where localized demand is, because I will say it's fair to say that it's not homogeneous across the city. There are specific areas where we are seeing larger amounts of demand for cricket than in others.
Okay, so one more question, I think. So when you first came here, Madam Chair, when they, when I heard the presentation, again, I'm, you know, I don't know anything about cricket, or, so I don't pretend to understand it that well. But when I heard the presentation, I immediately thought of a school community that would benefit from that. And I engaged my local councillor because we were in the position of, very complicated, but, you know, like, property and all that kind of stuff, in doing something for a school community that's a single-genders girls' school in a, you know, the west end of North York, that doesn't have a cricket field, doesn't have, you know, has a little, has a field, but how can I make sure that that is considered? Or should I just leave it to the staff and working group and just hope for the best?
I really appreciate, through the Chair, I really appreciate that question. I'm quite certain the location that you're referring to has already come up through the working group, through the staff at the Catholic School Board, but that is exactly the intent of the working group. So for instance, we're even meeting tomorrow to discuss early and low-hanging fruit opportunities, and homework has been assigned to the staff of the various board to bring forward these opportunities. So I am aware that opportunity is coming forward for discussion. So that is exactly the work of the group going forward. So through the staff, this is a vehicle for us to create a work plan. And really, as I said in my presentation, the hope is that by the end of the year, we've identified clear priorities for new facilities, for programming opportunities and equipment across the city. And I just, if I can just say, I just also like to, I didn't say off the outset, just to thank to the staff that have already committed to two really effective meetings so far and five more to go this year. It has been a really good opportunity, and staff have been really eager to work with the city on this.
Okay, so I was going to move a motion, but I won't because I feel reassured that you were dealing with that. I had a motion for the, at the last meeting, related to governments, and I'm trying to find it now, and I can't, to ask the province of Ontario and the government of Canada, consider funding for capital infrastructure for cricket pitches within the city of Toronto. And I'm wondering if we should include that, because it's sort of, or to recommend to the executive committee that that be sent out to the province and to the federal government, both on the gender issue and the cricket fields issue in terms of infrastructure. But would that be appropriate, or is that something that the working group will do?
Through the Chair, I think it would be very appropriate for the working group to deal with that. One big piece, obviously, once priorities are identified, it always does come down to the financial strategy. So I think the working group could very easily incorporate, you know, other funding opportunities at other levels of government, et cetera, to advance the priorities the boards and the city identify in collaboration.
Okay, so I'm not doing anything then. Thank you very much. Other than, at the appropriate time, I will move receipt.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your work.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question for staff. Just, do I need to message? Just for clarification on the trajectory of how this works its way through City Council. Cricket strategy, once that's all fully developed, that will come through City Council, correct?
Yes, that is correct. So the cricket strategy will come aligned in lockstep with the Facilities Plan update by year-end. So the priorities, I might be jumping ahead, but the priorities that we identify through our working group have the ability to implement themselves. It's being done at the same time, so they can find themselves embedded in our Facilities Plan.
Okay, so I would just also point out then- Okay, so I would just also point out then, would it perhaps, what Trustee Rizzo is suggesting in terms of any advocacy, that would probably be, from your point of view, would that be better to be done once that is more fully baked? So to speak?
Madam Chair, yes, absolutely. And it's also worth noting that the facilities plan coming forward has a significant financial strategy as part of it, which does look exactly at those advocacy opportunities outside of sort of traditional, like, city or school board funding sources as well. So I think that would be an appropriate place for us to embed it within the cricket strategy and the financial strategy of the facilities plan.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. So at this time, I'm not seeing any further questions for staff. Do any members wish to speak further on this item? No? So, Trustee Rizzo, I believe you wanted to move receipt of this item. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? I don't think that's everybody. Okay, I believe that's unanimous. Thank you. That item is now adopted. Received.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item we have on the agenda is TS 4.3. This is the backlog of city approvals for school board projects. Trustee Rizzo, please introduce your new business.
Thank you. I don't know where it is, but I'll try and find it.
No worries. We can help you with that and give you a moment.
So, Madam Chair, the letter, was that sent to the members?
Let me clarify with clerks.
Why do we call it "letter"? I don't understand that.
I'm still learning the city processes too, so I understand they're a bit quirky and a little bit different.
Really?
But this is how, this is how they add new business. Where I came from at the school board, we actually couldn't even add new business. So I think this is kind of nice that at least we have a mechanism to do that. But we're just all adapting to it. We're learning as we go. I'm learning just like you. I would just note, and just from the clerks, can we just have confirmation? Was the letter circulated to our members?
The letter was not circulated to members in advance. We were waiting on confirmation from Trustee Rizzo regarding some other emails back and forth. We were just waiting on confirmation if this is what she had wanted to move. So that's why we decided to wait to hold it down and add it this morning, so members are only seeing it for the first time this morning.
Okay, so I think perhaps...
I quite don't understand, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. I don't understand. I was, like, asked to send the letters. I sent the letters two days ago. I asked for staff to confirm that you received the letters and that they would be forwarded to members. I got confirmation, and here we are, and no one's seen them. And that's really unfortunate, which is really the problem with this process. And I don't know how to fix that, but, you know, I'll live with whatever process you want me to live with. But it's not fair to other members who have not received any of the information that I did provide several times. So I'm very confused.
So I think I now understand the process a little bit better, too. So I apologize that there's been some confusion, and we'll make sure that we advance circulate and have a better communication channel, should we have these kind of new business items added in advance, or added sort of in the days before a meeting. It is, just in terms of how the committee works, there is a more advanced planning as to how items get, they can just be added to the agenda earlier without these letters being done. And we'll send, I know that was sent to you more recently, but we'll make sure that we send out that procedure to all committee members, just so everyone has a better idea of it. And people can also feel free, you know, to always reach out to me in advance before we do agenda setting, if there's something you want to see on the agenda. So we'll make sure to see that we can perhaps streamline in that process. But in the meantime, perhaps we can just have the motion put on the screen so that people can see this. And I would just add that we have done a friendly amendment, which I mentioned to you just before the start of the meeting. We've replaced Chief Planner and Executive Director of City Planning with Executive Director Development Review, just because there's been a bit of change in city staff. So we wanted to make sure we got the right staff listed in this motion so that, you know, you got the right people at the table for our next meeting.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, I also sent, I received it late last night, an appendix to be added to the letter. Was that received?
Yes, we received it and added it to the item this morning.
So the members would have that now in front of them?
It's accessible on the agenda online, yes.
Okay, that's very good. So I will attempt to read that, and if I need any help, someone will read it for me, I hope. Okay, so I don't remember the words that you've made the amendment, because I don't remember what... Could you please repeat that so I can add?
We have just changed, oh, there it is on the screen. I'm not sure if you can see it on your screen. Okay. So instead of Chief Planner and Executive Director City Planning, we've just said Executive Director Development Review.
Okay, so request the Executive Director Development Review. I love...
Would it help if I read it for you?
Yes.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
So it's, "The City School Board's Advisory Committee recommends the executive committee: One, request the Executive Director Development Review to provide an update at the next City School Board Advisory Committee on outstanding approvals for school projects in the city of Toronto. Two, request the Executive Director Development Review to meet with board staff to discuss pragmatic solutions to streamline the city approval process. And three, request the Executive Director Development Review to recommend any possible changes that may lead to less wait time for school boards seeking city approvals."
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that. I really do appreciate it. As I indicated earlier, some school boards have waited, on average, I'm just going to speak specifically to my school board, which is the Toronto Catholic District School Board. We recently got a report that said that we waited 33 months, on average, for any city approval. I added the superintendent, who is online with us from the Toronto Catholic District School Board, and if you have any questions, you could ask either of the superintendents online to respond. But we received reports, and she actually made a list of outstanding school board applications with the city, and one of them was over five years now. Some of them were three years, some of them were two years. I don't think that there were very many that were less than that. And there's one project on there that happens to be in my ward that was approved by the former Liberal government, and it still hasn't been built. I mean, that's, like, we're talking more than 15 years in the making of a school, once we receive capital funding. That's sort of like, in a school, in a city where we have old-school facilities and lack of funding, and a province that doesn't provide capital funding to any of our school boards for more than two years, every little penny helps. And when they, for example, in the recent childcare example, that the Chair was gallantly, the present Chair, who is now councillor, but the former Chair of the Toronto District School Board, who championed the cause for childcare, they blamed the school boards and took away the funding for childcare centers because we didn't have approvals. And we've lost that funding, and I'm not sure where, when, or when that will ever come to play again. Like, it's really important that we all work together, because not only are school boards and school facilities available for community use in the evenings and after-hours, et cetera, but they are a community asset to all of our neighbors and residents in the city. And when we have obstacles, and I am not suggesting that it's the school board sometime, that it's the city, sometimes it's the school board, sometimes it's rapers organizations, sometimes it's like crazy stuff that we have no control over. But when we do have control over it, we need to make sure that approvals don't take the kind of time that it takes for us to start with the projects that we need to have for our kids in our communities. So I'm just suggesting that we have a discussion about how we can move that forward. And I do know that housing is really, really important to the city of Toronto, and I totally accept that they go, they take priority, and most of those projects take priority. But at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we don't have closed school boards boarding them up because we haven't got a city approval to put a shovel in the ground to build a school that needs to be done in the entire city of Toronto. I provided a list of them and the reasons why I think our staff have not been able to get it through, but I'm hoping that we cooperatively together can work towards a system that works for all of our kids and all of our residents in the city of Toronto. And if anybody has any suggestions on how to improve that even more, or to make another motion, I'd be delighted to hear about it.
Okay, so thank you for that introduction of your new business.
You need to use the microphone, sorry.
Sorry, I think I turned it off by accident. Thank you for introducing your new business, Trustee Rizzo, and for your comments. Does anybody have any questions for Trustee Rizzo on this? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I'm just going to ask the clerk for, I'm just going to pause for one moment. I just want to clarify something. Oh, Nathan, do you have a question?
No, not to the mover. I just wanted to speak on it. If you want to leave, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, just give me one moment. Okay, thank you for your patience, everybody. I'm going to go to Trustee Shen to speak on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just think that I have not asked our equal and department, if you may, to look at what our approval process or planning and our facilities-related matters are and how they're delayed. I'm assuming there would be some concerns, but I'm not too sure if it's the same level of concern. So I'm more than happy to support having a presentation next meeting from the Executive Director of whatever the title was. And then I do think that by that time, I'll be able to generate from Toronto District School Board what our concerns might be. I do think the second and third thing could come out of that meeting as opposed to preempting it at this point of time. So I'm happy to support either the first part of the motion, or say, the first part, and then ask in the presentation, include ways in which things could be streamlined and so on, like suggestions from the official that's attending, as opposed to directing something early for the staff to do before we've had the presentation. So I'm happy to support Part One, and then say Part Two and Three, the include as part of the presentation, suggestions from the staff. And then after hearing and after maybe checking with our school board, we might be able to propose some additional, you know, business arising or amendments to the report.
So, so Trustee Rizzo, Vice Chair, or, Trustee Shen has suggested perhaps almost like a friendly amendment to vote on Part One, and that there be a suggestion, perhaps slightly more informally made to the staff that are present, to include those items as part of the presentation. And then when we hear that presentation at the next meeting, all of the trustees will have had a chance to go back to their boards and talk about it, and perhaps some further recommendations or motions might come out of it at the meeting. Are you amenable to that?
Absolutely. I'm fine to, should I withdraw Number Two and Three until, and just move the first part of, only one of them, which is a report on outstanding approvals for school projects in the city of Toronto, and leave the rest of it? I think that the people around the table have heard what my concerns are, so I'm sure that maybe there won't be any delays and we'll be good by the next meeting. So I'm happy with that. That's fine. And thank you, Trustee Shen, for that suggestion.
Okay, so I think what we could do then is perhaps do a friendly amendment to this. So perhaps I'll move that we incorporate the change of Chief Planner and Executive Director City Planning to Executive Director Development Review, and we'll just have it be Part One. And as part of that amendment, we'll remove Parts Two and Three and consider them incorporated. I'm just going to check procedurally with the clerk that that's the proper process for this. Okay, we're just going to give the clerk's office a moment to prepare that for us.
In the meantime, could I ask the superintendent if she has any comments? Maybe I'm out of line by taking the Number Two and Three out. Could I ask? She's online. Through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to request that the...
So because she's not a member of the committee, it must be a specific question. So do you want to...
Yeah, I'll ask her.
Okay, so perhaps while we're just waiting for that, and can you identify who the staff member would be? Just for the rest of us who are on the committee who don't know your superintendent.
Superintendent Milka, and I don't know how to pronounce her last name, so you're going to have to, I call her Zed.
Thank you, Trustee Rizzo. Through the chair, I apologize that I'm not able to turn my camera on for some reason, but I hope you can hear me. I actually, I don't have anything further to add, but I'm happy to answer.
Milka, could you please tell us what your title is and your, your last name?
Oh, apologize, it's, my name is Milka Zlomislj and I am the superintendent of capital and renewal, so new construction at the Toronto Catholic District School Board.
Thank you, sorry, I, you know I always have trouble with your name and I apologize. So Superintendent, I'm wondering if you could, you heard the two, the three motions, is that okay with you to take away number two and number three and just have the report for the next meeting? And do you have any other comments around the, the length and time of...
So just to, just a reminder, because she's not a member of the committee, it's not really, we don't, we don't have staff providing, staff who aren't as part of this committee providing, or city staff providing, my...
Okay, Madam Chair, that's...
Answers to questions about motions, I guess. I'm, I'm being directed by the clerk's office, so if you could just...
Okay, so I won't ask her what her opinions are, I'll just ask her to provide members with clarification on, on the processes used by the Toronto Catholic District School Board in obtaining city approvals. And Madam, Madam Chair, just for the record, you know, I was here when, and I'm saying this as a point of order, a point of information, point of order, whatever you want to use it as. So I was a member many years ago and all of our staff from the Toronto District School Board, from the French Boards, like all of our staff were part of the tables behind us, to be perfectly frank. And they were part of, they were staff as resources and that's what the, this superintendent is doing, is as a resource to this committee from the Toronto Catholic. And anybody could be there from other boards if they chose to do that.
So I, I understand the, I understand the concern you're raising and the question you're raising. I'm, I'm learning as we go, so I, that would have been my expectation too, but I'm being advised differently. So I will get this sorted.
I don't, I totally don't agree. That's not the history of this committee and, 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 and other members have witnessed that they have responded to other questions in the past on this committee and we've had three so far.
Okay, so let me just pause for a minute and I'm just going to seek clarification because this is my first meeting.
And Nathan's, Nathan has his hand up.
Okay, so the clerk sitting beside me also is her first meeting on this committee, so I, um...
Okay, I've got the corporate history then.
Yeah, we're just going to go to, I see that Trustee Shen had his hand up and then Trustee O'J. So please go ahead, Trustee Shen.
Madam Chair, if this is helpful, I think when an agenda item comes, just as how staff from city of Toronto would answer questions related to that particular item, staff from the school boards may be able to answer questions as specific to those items. I don't think that would be an issue, but I think maybe trustees, so it's a question about how do you support the particular motion, whether you're okay with it, is the kind of question that might have led to confusion. I think staff can provide input, but staff may not be weighing in on whether they support the motion.
I totally agree.
That's the only difference. I think if, as, if an item comes and a particular staff have attended, in addition to provide additional resource or reference to a particular motion and they could be, even ask questions by other, other councillors or trustees from other boards can ask questions to that particular person who's there as a resource. So I think that might have been the confusion, I just wanted to clarify if that's, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. And Trustee O'J.
I was just going to suggest that we, we put this to a vote. Trustee Rizzo has support for her proposal. There are no questions. Let's move ahead.
Okay, thank you. So can I just get a show of hands on the motion as amended? So this is part one with the change of the title in it, if we could just put that on the screen.
Nathan wants to speak.
Okay, yes. So they're just, I think Trustee Shen was voting, do you have more to add?
No, I was voting.
Yeah, I think he was just voting. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, I see, because we have to, we have to merge. Could we just say a presentation? Could we just say a presentation? We're just making sure the language reflects what was discussed, so if, if everybody could just give clerk's office one moment. Okay, we're ready to bring this up onto the screen. So the item as amended would read, the city school board delete recommendations two and three from item TS 4.3, so that it now reads as follows. The city school board's advisory committee recommends the executive committee, one, request the executive director development review to provide an update at the next city school board advisory committee on the approval process for school projects and a list of outstanding projects in the city of Toronto. Okay, so I'll now, we'll open the vote on this amended motion. All those in favor? Okay, and that has carried unanimously. It has been, oh wait, and now we need a vote to adopt as amended. So all those in favor? Thank you, that has carried unanimously. Okay, the next item on the agenda. No, we still have student voice, I think, don't we? No, you're not done yet. Okay, we're on the, we're on the second last item if we count adjournments, so student trustee voices. Trustee Rizzo, you may introduce your new business now. Um, so I'm just, are we able to put that up on the screen? The motion. You're, you're welcome to just paraphrase and introduce the item though in general. I think, I think you could probably be fairly brief because I think people got a sense of it at the beginning.
I can't remember where the, if I had a motion on it. Okay, so I am proposing that the committee request student trustees from each board to attend the next meeting or appropriate, the next meeting to present their perspective about their needs and challenges. I say this respectfully, as much as I know that it's during the school day, most of our student trustees are very, very active in many ways during the school day and they still manage to get very high marks in, in their studies. I'm happy that the chair will be, if it's not in June, then appropriate date during the time. I believe that we were dealing with issues around youth violence. We've had presentations at this committee about that. We've had presentations about lots of different things that affect youth. And I think that if we don't, if we don't deal with the issues regarding student trustees and hear their perspective from, hear their perspective in terms of how important some things are and how important, how unimportant other things are to them, we're, we, and also for them to have an opportunity to network with their other school, student trustees, which they presently do in, in, which they presently do, they, they are really quite amazing creatures. So I'm, I'm just think that it would be a really nice opportunity to have them here to understand what we're here and helping them through that. I'm making blubber blubber because I can't even read what I wrote, so I appreciate if you would consider it. And again, it's, I'm not asking for you to debate it today, but if you don't think that it's appropriate, then we won't do it. But I think sometimes it's really important to have that voice at the table, as many of us know how important their voices are around the boardroom tables at our own boards.
Now I would just ask if there are any questions. Trustee Shen, go ahead for the mover.
Madam Chair, through you, maybe this is a friendly amendment to change from request to invite. So school boards may decide if it's appropriate for their student trustees to spend the time and so on. So it's not necessarily a mandatory request kind of a someone, kind of a thing as opposed to invite. And, and then I do think that exam times, even though exam might start a couple of days later, taking away the June and putting appropriate time might be good. I think September might be better because of the fact that the new trustees can come in and then continue to be engaged and advise us, after, new student trustees can advise us on the committee from behind the scene after they come to their first meeting, when they start their new term. So with those two changes, I would be more than happy to support the motion. If that, if those changes are friendly, if not, I can make those amendments.
Modern and friendly, thank you very much, Trustee Shen, for those. I, I totally appreciate the reason why you would say invite, not request, but I'm, I'm happy to amalgamate them into my motion.
Okay.
Thank you for those suggestions. Madam Chair, through you.
So we're working on, on some language on that. We were already, we had already put in some stuff like that, so just stay tuned for one moment. I think, Trustee O'J, do you have, did you have your hand up?
I did not. I think I, I think I made my perspective clear before the meeting, that the, the committee should stay focused on specific issues related to collaboration with the city of Toronto and not reproduce what's being done at our, at our boards.
So we're just going to pull up some language. I think there's, I think there's, I would just add that I think there's a way to take all of that into account. The way we're working on the language is, I think it's going to say something to the effect of that the chair work with the school boards to invite student trustees. And I think there could be an aim, I would just add, that as we go forward with this, if boards want to invite their student trustees, I, I think we should be, I personally think we should be encouraging a focus on some perspective that we might glean from student trustees about how they interact with the city. So things that might be, that might be in the purview of sort of how school boards and city, their interaction affect them. So that we might be able to garner some information from them that might help in the mandate of this committee. I think that would have to be the focus because I, I think, just to provide them with a, a general to come and speak, I think it has to be related to what is the mandate of this committee. So I would be, I would see that in my role, I guess, as chair, to work with each of you to figure out how to take that back to your school trustees. And so the language that I'm going to suggest would be to, we're going to put it up on the screen so people can read this as well, but that we delete the recommendation to invite student trustees from each board to attend the June 18th meeting to present their perspectives about their needs and challenges and instead request that the chair of the city school board's advisory committee to work with the four school boards to invite student trustees to present at a future meeting. And I think we can have some flexibility in how, how, and I, I think I would want some feedback from each of you when, in, when I have those conversations about what you might be thinking would be the, the role of that presentation if they were going to make that presentation. And I think you could potentially work with your student trustees as you do at each of your meetings to, to frame it in a way that would be productive to this meeting. So that would be my suggestion. Does that make sense? Okay, so with that in mind, this has been a true community, community working on, of all of us working on this motion, I'll, I'll just ask for a vote to amend this. The vote is to amend, correct?
You could do that.
Yeah, I'm happy to move that. So all those in favor? Okay, that has passed and can we adopt the amended motion? A vote on that as well, thank you. Okay, so that has now passed. It seems like we have a great meeting, you know... know, lining up for the next couple of meetings. We've got some topics and I'm interested in working further with everybody on this committee to think about what our work plan will be for the year coming up. So looking forward to those conversations and my office will reach out to you to schedule time for that. At this time, I think we are, I would like to say ahead of schedule. And I would ask at this time, could I have someone please move a motion to excuse the absence of the members who are not in attendance today? So we have a couple of members. This would be to excuse the absence of Riad Deshane, Yalini Rajakula Singham, and councillor Parthi Kandeville from the February 26, 2025 meeting of the committee. So I just need a mover for that. I'm, oh, thank you.
Have you ever done that before?
I don't know because I wasn't here before. Maybe everybody was present, but that's the procedure of the city at these meetings. So...
Somebody do that. I don't know.
Yeah. And with that in mind, I would just mention that if you're not going to be present at a meeting, it's helpful if you let the clerk's office know and that way we're prepared. Trustee Ojai.
And just as a question, did those three people indicate they would not be present ahead of the meeting?
So that's a great question. I believe we didn't hear from trustee Kandeville or councillor Kandeville except during, at the very beginning of this meeting because we reached out to him. But he's in, unfortunately, this meeting was scheduled at the same time as, as one of the standing committees, so he, that he's on. So he's in another room at the city. And trustee Rajakula Singham, I believe, is on maternity leave, but perhaps trustee Shan may be heard. But we, I don't, I'll just confirm with the clerk's office. Did we hear of anybody else? Okay, so we did hear from trustee Deshane. But I will be, we will look in future. I would like to have a sense of whether we have quorum or not too in advance, I think would be helpful. Okay, so all those in favor? And are we, do we display this on the screen? I think it was there, but it left. Any opposed? Okay, that has carried. So that concludes our business for today. Thank you everyone for your patience and for participating. The meeting is now adjourned and we are ahead of schedule. So people have some found time. Thank you. And I would just add thank you to those who made the trek down here, to those who set aside time for this, but also to the many staff for their work on this, both the support staff in terms of clerk's office, but also to the staff who prepare for these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.